Thursday, March first, two thousand twelve, to order at seven oh eight P M. Ask you to please browse the credit books. And you first order this is the approval of the agenda. Mister Peter which moves past ten minutes of words in discussion. And on paper, those against that passes by to nothing. For the record, this is Tio and this will be asking this evening. Next, we have a public hearing. This is a discussion of full day kindergarten and redistricting and public testimony. Before opening the public hearing, we'll have Doctor Thornton give an overview on the entire proposal. And then at that point, I'll open up our public hearing and then I'll close the public hearing. And if there are any questions from the committee, we will take that back. The schedule is for March eighth, which would be next Thursday, we'll vote on the proposal. Doctor Thornton.
Hello, good evening. Firstly, um, orients you what you have at your places on your computer. You have the attachments for the lives math. You have the breakout of students going from one school to the other. Say I was on the website. You also have the average class size in the model. I put something else to places. It's an updated estimate of the cost when we start that if I could. We tried to really tighten the model. As you know, a few months ago, I started off saying around five to thousand, then we were lower some time back. Now we're back up to a pretty tight five oh two six six six. Can you break down what that would include? Seven point five teachers, whether they're kindergarten, first grade, second grade, I don't know what shakes out in the job pool. We get with the principals, and we now down to two point three itinerants. That means it's right kindergarten, you have to add art, music, P E, that kind of thing. I know the principal is charted up to two point three as a need. We got to the pensions, Medicare, wealth insurance, dental, medical, transportation, and also furniture. And also subtracting off the midday bus runs that are not preschool. So right now, we've got five oh two six six six. That's kind of a, a potential bid in terms of the dollar. In terms of what's been happening at the blade, I can tell you, we met this morning with Dora and had a conversation on our next steps. If the committee were to approve this next week, they would start actually modeling the bus runs. To give you a sense of this, I know some folks might think, why can't we model now and have an exact map right now? I was telling you, just look at work that way. It's at least two weeks of work to model the school district to model thirty bus runs. So during time, I've assessed the manpower matters, you actually take a vote. Right now, we have conceptual models, I know. So if you were to vote affirmatively on the K, they would start that. I told them if that was to happen, I would want to get the homework back by April first. I know we want it to really be in front on the timeline. In terms of how that affects the math, I would expect probably to have a fourth map of what I call fringe adjustments. Anything really model this for real? You always find a little tweak here or there on the bus run. So I'd say map four might be two percent difference. So I wouldn't say to be a carbon dioxide, but that's my experience when you're modeling things. So that means what this morning, like I said, we'll be meeting again with them. Also, in terms of the busing, you should all, you've also probably heard about how the high schools looking at a different schedule. Have you heard of that? I told some members of the committee, um, in the high school, for a long period of time, the students have left approximately one thirty-five P M. The difficulty here is we did feature on these heads. We do have being in at the school health, but technically speaking, our whole high school's not in session as long as they could be. Having said that, I have the high school starts to model how can we look to maximize our time and really look at differently. That's when they heard about seven year day, that conversation. So in terms of Dura, they're kind of modeling a full day K piece. We're now maybe in P M, all the kids are in the morning together traveling. We're also modeling a potential longer days of high school. So we're doing it all at once, if you will, really try to tackle this. So that's part of the equation for Dura. Um, in terms of your attachments, the attachment that has gone from one school to the other, if you could pull that one up. That's the one who would say, for example, from Ashton to the Illinois, from the Illinois to Ashton, that kind of thing. I did have a couple of public meetings since last time we talked. One was a Bear Hill community type meeting and one was a meeting, I believe, with Garvin, Garvin folks. At both meetings, the topic did come up about cohorts. I would tell you, there were different feelings in the groups. I told the committee earlier, it's still true, I can keep a cohort together. So for example, when we talked at Bear Hill, let me find one for you. Okay, you look at kind of a pink color halfway down from community to Garvin, far right. You got that panel, from community to each school. The far right is through community to Garvin. Look at grade four, that's nineteen students. So if I was to, uh, you know, we're saying here, all nineteen of those students are going from community to Garvin. Technically speaking, you could have them all be in one classroom if you wanted to. The interesting part of here was, in different meetings, we have different responses. At one meeting, folks really thought that was really good to describe for. Another meeting, if we'll maybe we'd go, you know, ten or eleven, double the whole group at least two months. So I guess if you voted it in, I'll look at guys in the committee, what's your cohort number? Twelve, ten, as many as I can. I know with Garvin in the models, every survey, I had thirty-four. I could do two seventeens, if you will, pushing that. So that's that cohort piece. In terms of being held harmless, we've talked a lot about grade four kids with one year left, can they finish in the school they're in? I can't say that can happen right now, because I've been picking and choosing. So for example, we talked about it at, um, the Bear Hill meeting, there are nineteen fourth graders. If I kept them in community, that's twenty-nine in class. That's too much for me, I think, to recommend to you. But if we did get a place where we could hold people harmless in whole groups and not have to have a lottery, I would support that. That's kind of, is probably down the road. We know that if we do go forward with this, some folks may declare to do two different things. We'll get a better percentage of numbers as we go forward. So that, in essence, is the conversation since the last time. You know, to really open any questions from, from the committee.
Some questions, Mr. Peter, on what Doctor Thornton just outlined since the last meeting. Um, is there any questions at this time? Do you want to, just, do you want to just give a brief overview for if there's anyone here who hasn't been at any of the other meetings? Just, just an overall, yeah, fair play on the proposal, please.
Sure. If you go to the picture on the map.
Mister Kent has a question, Mister Kent.
Doctor Thornton, uh, in this graph that we're looking at here, in this chart that we're looking here, how does this affect kindergarten? Is this kindergarten staying the same, just the redistricting? Or is this factoring in full day kindergarten in the model we're looking at here?
This is full day.
Okay.
If you do it, I can start with a map, give you a sense of the project, exactly what they, to give you according to the map. When we started looking at this some months ago, we tried looking at how to optimize the schools and fit full day K in our five element schools. Knowing that B F Norton has been underpopulated, we started from the south and worked our way north. So in essence, we had to uphold from the southern border of Garvin, fill up B F, and then work our way north. As you do this, you can see, you know, the geography changes in each zone, especially if you look at Cumberland Hill. And that's really a function of where the students live. Earlier, I had to the committee a dot map, if you will, of where the students reside, two concentrations in the north and the south. In the model maps like this, it's really a function of whole class, the whole areas, not individual streets. And that's kind of the, uh, the art science of this. We spent several weeks grabbing different sections, trying to make groups that fit. Some people might grab an area that has too many first graders, but not enough second graders. You have to keep pulling and trying to make sense of this. Whether you do this, I know some folks may say, well, we can model it by keeping the kids in the grade they are, grade one, grade two, grade three, or roll them forward a year. Our experience has been keeping them where they are, is the best model in terms of trying to predict these numbers. These numbers are, are, are a set of the population of Cumberland, factoring in things like the house starts, all those things you could look at with a kind of inject on the map. Knowing that in the model, there are any gap, there could be problems, whatever we model won't be the stats, nobody will get, you know, fall. But you have to have the, have the best information at that time. And like this is two years ago, on K three, four, five, and K five, same conversation, we modeled it, hell, not pretty good. We didn't have a lot of change, a lot of variance, like three percent variance from what we did. So that was the map, in essence. Going back, uh, sometime, we had a first map. And from the first map, we had some group discussions, and my team and I noticed we were off by a few numbers every time we had coverage in a certain area. Looking at our numbers further, we realized the Dura computer wasn't matching the school district computer numbers, because they weren't communicating. So we had to reconcile that, disrupt the data. They were off by around three hundred students. So we did scrub the data, and that created the map two. And that's when we had that second, second iteration of the span. Currently, the map is, is our best thinking at this time. And as you can see, Cumberland Hill is substantially smaller in area. Students have votes from the high boards to, I believe, the low boards. Community still is a large area, you can see, but that's when we're talking about the geography, where folks are spread out. In this model, B F is fully utilized, it's in much, much more capacity. We change slides, natural, grand enrollments, I can take you through that, these are projected enrollments. If you look at Ashton, that's the map, like with the numbers on it, the grade one, grade two, grade four. To look at Ashton on the far right is adjusted classroom size, that would be eighteen, twenty-one, seventeen, nineteen, twenty-four, twenty-three, total of four oh four. Keep in mind also, we told you one of our last meetings, we had to manually place in three groups. We'd manually placed in the ESL students, special education students, because all the schools have programming in every other school. We also had to place in the school choice students from a couple of years ago, so those were also put in manually. If you look at the F Norton class size, you can see twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-three, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-six, four forty-three. So B F goes from approximately, I believe, the two eighty neighborhood to the four forty neighborhood. One point, I've still B F held in the high force, so just a sense of history there. Community, you can see eighteen, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-four, total of six sixty. I know with community, historically, I've heard it's been as high as seven eighteen. Currently, they're around seven twenty, seven nineteen. In one of our earlier maps, we had them down to five fifty-eight. Problem was, we couldn't fit the other students, other schools. The footprint, community is just bigger, and that's where the kids need to go. To keep community smaller, I would have had to add fortables in one of the other schools. So that's why we had that number at six sixty. Cumberland Hill, Steve goes fourteen, twenty, nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, three sixty-five in total. I believe we're down to around the high fours. And Garvin, eighteen, twenty-one, seventeen, twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-two. So after we've all these kind of moves on the map, this was the best break I mean we'd get as far as class size numbers. Now folks always ask me, what's the optimal class size, what's the deck size? I think it's really a case of, you know, your tolerances. As far as the class size research, from what I've read, if you're in the low teens, you see some good at deck size, some good improvements. After that, if you're in the high teens, mid twenties, you don't see much of a difference. To me personally, I wouldn't want to see anything, I think, in the higher twenties. That's where I am. But right now, these, all these numbers, I know some were in, in that, you know, decent parameter. We have, we have one twenty-six in B F grade five. Three less students in that, these grade five will roll forward. So take these numbers and roll them forward, if you will, so the five is now six. With K, we're assuming some growth. We didn't model it, it's really the most going to come. So for example, in Ashton with the K, you have eighteen, I believe, we can fit more in there. We just have to model, we can build a local come. We know that the two northern schools around fifty percent of folks, right, fortunately folks, don't utilize public K right now. So we have to kind of try to estimate how many folks would come back off of public K. So that's what we'll think we have to kind of, kind of look at. For example, that community, look at our community, you can see in grade one, there are five sections. Grade two, five sections. Kindergarten, four sections. So would this fifth section come back? Right now, eighteen in the room, I could fit fifteen more if I had a section. If everybody came back, then we're looking at something else. When folks ask about that, I think we have to react to what we get and be flexible. If we had more students, that's a problem I'm going to take on with, with certainly the over there, you know. So that's a sense of the numbers in the map. From that, I would tell you, we did a lot of public outreach, trying to do a lot of outreach. I'm going to speak wherever I've been, invited into the PTOs, I've been to a couple of locations, I believe the Rotary, a lot of other venues, trying to kind of get the message out. We did a couple of meetings in the afternoons to give more folks a chance, so we did those. We also, at one point, I know folks had said they did turn up a lot, we published on the website, we did, I believe, an email blast and a phone mail blast. So trying to get information out there to folks, as far as what it looks like. A lot of individuals individually, with parents or myself, just kind of going back and forth on certain questions. So I think that's a sense of, you know, where it's been. True to the team effort in terms of working with my staff and looking at the models and the numbers and really trying to cover every possible contingency, including furniture, or all those kinds of budgets, et cetera.
Okay, thank you, Doctor Thornton. Are there any questions? This one down this way.
Uh, that's a thought, just to clarify things. I'm still looking at the adjustment classroom spreadsheet something up front. What you're saying by that is the current situation as it's dead at, we'll say, community school. With everybody moving into the place for next fall. So, so actually, this six fifty numbers, can we inflate it? Can you say that? Because you're not actually, you don't actually have twenty-four fifth graders, because those, next year, they'll be doing the minimum. I guess I'd say, I'm not sure if it's inflated, I think it's the best model we can give for this time. I mean, I don't know, like I said, these models usually have a plus or minus in them, but my experience has been they're pretty close. You can model it either way, you can roll them up right now, like take, take them ones to do it, and leave where they are. My experience has been less erudite this way, but you're right, that fifth grade goes to grade six. K coming in, we can assume it's level, we can assume, so it's the best case, you're right. We assume K goes up, four goes up, five goes up, thank you. And K level, if it down a bit, it'd be nice, helpful a bit. Yes?
Because some of the questions that we're receiving, one question we're receiving, if we're taking kids, say, from Cumberland Hill, that's in class twenty-five, and we're just moving them to a community where it's class twenty-five, what is their benefit? And there actually wouldn't be, they're still in the same home, there's no, it's not going to be reduced in class size.
Uh, the goal of this was to reduce class size, to get full day K in the district. But to me, I know some folks have a good argument saying, well, they moved from school A to school B, they've been the same class size. What's in it for me, not already in fourth grade? The answer is, I think, in the district, it's a better move. While individually, some folks may not get a benefit, if they're being moved to get the same class size, I get that. But in terms of the whole district, I'll kind of look at what's best, it's entire district doing this, that's why I'm arguing it. But I can't say I can benefit every person, like if they want some more class size, I can't do it.
Do we have kids that remember yet?
More than eighteen and nineteen, we changed the dates at eighteen, nineteen. My experience has been, about eighty percent of the kids enrolled through the Gardner Public Schools in the winter, spring. A lot of twenty percent come middle of August, and, you know, out of nowhere, they come. So we have to assume, we'll probably need to spend all the numbers in, in front of the model from there. So late March, I want to accept that, and then look to kind of scramble, like, how many kids might come in in August? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else at this time? Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing. I do have any sign and sheet just to come in, do we have enough? Not necessary, but we'll, we'll go by the sign and sheet then, at that, after that. Anyone who'd like to come up, can come up.
My name is Rosemary Riker Shamatt, and I live at St. Echo Road in Cumberland. And you know that I'm a parent of a student in Cumberland Schools. And I'll also tell you tonight that I have a health education certification, and I have a doctorate in education leadership. And I'm here tonight because I wanted to support your efforts for full day K. And I realize that it's controversial, because it involves redistricting. But I have attended the last couple of meetings and heard people question the benefit of full day kindergarten. So I did a little bit of research in my, on my own, and I wanted to share that with you. Um, the first is a, an article that was published in two thousand and six in the American Journal of Education. And the authors evaluated data from early childhood longitudinal study, which included a nationally represented sample of over eight thousand kindergarteners and five hundred U.S. public schools. And this was across the nineteen eighty-eight and nineteen ninety-nine. And major findings from that study included that children who attend full day kindergarten learn more in literacy and mathematics, that they spend thirty percent more time in reading, and forty-six percent more time in mathematics. And that full day kindergarten is equally effective for children of different social backgrounds. And that last finding in particular is a little bit different from some of the other studies that say that there's more benefit for low income and at risk, excuse me, at risk students. But that difference may have to do with the initial focus of full day kindergarten being more targeted towards students who are from a low income family, or who are, you know, quote unquote, at risk. Next is the Clearing House on Early Education and Parenting, and they share, there's a whole bunch of information on that website, so I just picked two things. But despite the generally mixed results concerning the effect of all day kindergarten on academic achievement in the nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties, there were consistent findings on the positive effects of academic achievement for students who are identified as at risk. Research that was reported in the nineteen nineties, however, shows a more consistent and positive academic focus for all children who are involved in full day K. And that might be connected to the fact that the focus of kindergarten programs actually changed in the nineteen nineties to be more focused on academics and more targeted towards helping make sure that children are ready for first grade. Then in, in two thousand and eight, the U.S. Department of Education contracted with this organization called West Ed, National Educational Laboratory West, on a literature review of full day kindergarten and student achievement. And that review encompassed a decade from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and eight, and looked at the effect of full day kindergarten as compared to half day programs on student achievement in reading and mathematics. And the purpose of it was to explain and look at how those different pieces of research, in particular their study design, influenced the findings. So they looked at two hundred ninety-nine studies. And of those two hundred ninety-nine, only twenty-one passed an initial screening designed to identify research reports that examined academic outcomes of full day kindergarten programs as compared to half day. And then a systemic review of those twenty-one reports identified eleven that described research designs of sufficient rigor to be included in the summaries of research findings. So that means that there might be other factors that influence differences beyond a full or half day experience, because none of those particular research designs use what they call the random samples. So, for instance, if the difference were based on a child socioeconomic status, there might be particular characteristics about children involved in those programs that could cause some differences. Or if it were a matter of choice, choosing full day kindergarten versus half day kindergarten, because your district offered that choice, there might be characteristics of families and children who are more likely to choose full day than half day. So you can't, it's harder to say that the kindergarten program was the thing that mattered. These studies are consistent in suggesting a relationship between attendance in full day kindergarten and higher levels of early reading skills as measured at the end of kindergarten. The research study could not draw the same kinds of conclusions about mathematics. And that particular review, I think, really underscores the importance of examining methods and kind of looking beyond just the study findings, but really kind of peeling back the layer of the onion some more, so that you're really looking at, well, if they, if this study came up with this finding, exactly how was that research done? Then the National Research Council and the Institute of Medicine published this book, From Nerd to Neighborhoods, The Science of Early Childhood Development. And I, I work in the public health field, and this particular book was really a sensational piece that drove a holistic approach towards early childhood education and really emphasis on systems development. Because there, there wasn't the same kind of rigor and standards around early childhood, there was a variety of experiences that children could have. And this, this report really helped to kind of bring the conversation together of what really needs to happen to help young kids succeed and be ready for school. So the book, among many things, examines how biological and environmental influences work together dynamically over the course of a child's development. Both can be sources of human growth potential or risk and dysfunction. And then additionally, research on the brain development reveals an ongoing potential for the development of neural pathways to support learning from infancy through young adulthood. And, you know, full day kindergarten is a kind of place to get the energy set up. And finally, I also included the latest full day kindergarten data indicator from what I'm in Kids Count Factbook. And Kids Count is a premier childhood advocacy organization. They use research and data to promote policies and programs to benefit children's families in Rhode Island. And there's a lot of facts in this brief, but presently seventeen school districts in Rhode Island offer publicly funded, excuse me, seventeen school districts and all of the publicly funded charter schools in Rhode Island offer a universal full day K. And Cumberland is one of twelve communities that have no publicly funded full day K program. So clearly, I think that there's a really great opportunity here. And, you know, as, as a parent who is coming towards the end of the time where I have children in public school, and I've been involved in my children's education, and I've been involved in school-based and district-based efforts to improve education and work with people here. And I can tell you that anything that I consider of substance that I've been involved in, my children have not directly benefited, benefited from. And that's not a, I'm not, gosh, I lost my word. So I'm not intending, that's not a, criticism, thank you very much. It's not a criticism of the district. It's really sometimes the way things go. So when, when I hear people saying, you know, oh, hold back, or maybe we should wait, or just pilot, you know, things take a long time. And I'm speaking more, you know, to the parents as well as to you. And, you know, I applaud people who have, you know, really gotten up and gotten involved, and parents reaching out to other parents. And I think that that's really the recipe that helps people feel comfortable, and I would encourage people to do that. But, you know, if we can make it work, I encourage it all, you know, go for it and don't hold back. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bob Short. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Bob Short, thirty eighth Plant Street. So at the beginning, I've been talking about a possible redistricting, what's to happen. The PTO, I'm a sole board member of the PTO Cumberland Hill, wanted to make sure that we were involved, so that the proper information was getting to the parents. This has been a priority of all the PTO throughout Cumberland, and mostly you guys have seen the PTO's step in inviting parents to the schools. And I think that's important for you guys on the committee to know that we, we as PTOs have decided to start to work together in regards of the outcome, what effect this redistricting is going to happen. We are, all the PTOs are being affected by the redistricting, and some more worse than others, where there's board members of three to, two to three people that are going to a new school, which is unfortunate. And we're, we're losing ninety-nine point nine percent of our volunteers. There's no question that next year will be a big, a big, to do for all, a big challenge. So I wanted to let you know, I'm a committee that, and the parents here So I wanted to let you know, on the committee that, and the parents here tonight, have all the children being affected, because the question keeps coming up, who's looking after the kids, what are we going to do? So I think it's important that you know that the PTOs are getting together. There's been this invisible line in Cumberland with north and south, and that I think it's long overdue that this has happened, unfortunately it took this long. But we want to, we want to lay out plans so the parents know that their kids will be taken care of. Cumberland Hill unfortunately isn't accepting the new kids, but we do have kids that would be moving, and we, of course, want them to make sure that, we want them to be taken care of when they go to community or Ashton. So as a group, we're going to be prepared regardless of what the vote will come down to. As a parent, I love Cumberland Hill. I love the school because that's the school my, my son will remember having a wonderful experience. I would have loved any school that my children will attend just as much as I do Cumberland Hill. It's not the school that motivates me. It's my want to be part of my children's life and the attempt to make sure I do everything possible to ensure every possible opportunity will be given to them. Just like all the parents that are here, we're here just looking out for our children's interests. My opinion on full-day K comes from a real-life situation that my wife and I are facing right now that just came out in the past three weeks. We're, we're preparing to keep him back this year, and it's not due to anything other than the fact that he missed the cutoff by three weeks. He would typically be in first grade right now, but he's been born three weeks later. He loves school, tries his best, his mind's just not up to par. Now, if full-day K was available two years ago, maybe there would have been more instructions to help overcome this learning curve that he faced with the disadvantage of being weeks away from that cutoff, or even identify the possibility to hold him back a year earlier so that it wouldn't have been delayed all the way for him to make his decision in second grade where first grade would have been his first full year of full-day schooling. My wife and I have really just looked at it from the standpoint that we got to send him to school a year early to see how he would do, and we might, we've always been faced with this fact since the end. Now, my daughter, who's a couple of years away from starting at elementary school, also faces the same similar situation, and I am sure, I'm sure others as well will be, and I can't imagine how full-day K wouldn't help identify any of these issues that these parents might face with the same situation. So just wanted to bring that point up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Paul Anderson.
Good evening. Sorry, I'm sexual sex, I'll just do that, left the mic. I have two children that Crumlin Hill Elementary School who would be moving if the redistricting proposal went forth. One of the things that we hear a lot about is in relation to the children who would be moving, that they'll be fine, that there'll be no problems with that. Most of those comments, I should say all the comments that I've heard, have come from parents whose children would not be moving. And so there are, are some things that I think need to be kept in mind when considering this issue. First is that kids can't and often don't verbalize their concerns and issues and some of the difficulties in transition and stressors like this in any kind of direct manner, and they often show these sorts of problems in more indirect and subtle ways. Also, some of the research bears some consideration in terms of transitioning. First, the 2009 Notre Dame study indicated that student achievement is negatively impacted in terms of the children who change schools. That study also revealed that the children who remain behind and who didn't change schools, their student achievement was also negatively impacted when there was a turnover within the school population. Another study conducted at the Children's Hospital Medical Center of Cincinnati in 2003 indicated that children who changed schools are more likely to exhibit behavioral problems. This result replicated in other research as well, and I think it does point to the fact that children do manifest some of the stressors in terms of transitions in less obvious ways. Another research indicated that kids are more likely to lag behind other children get to transition from one school to another in both reading and math. So these are just some, some findings that I think are worth considering and some concerns raised on our part. I know also that Cumberland Hill students have already gone through one transition. They went to, each Cumberland Hill student went to kindergarten at community schools, so they've already undergone one change, one move in schools. A second major issue is sort of the context in which we're considering this change, in sort of two areas in which I see that as somewhat problematic. First, it's going really fast. There's been a lot of sort of different maps. The first map did not take into account the school choice students, the English, the second language students and so on. Subsequent maps have, but I think that that's had the impact of where parents feel like this is a very quick, rapid, perhaps too quick change. And so that perhaps could be looked at a little bit more closely. I think the bigger issue, my final point, is about the recent de-cap scores that came out, particularly in regard to the high school and mathematics proficiency. If my number is correct, thirty-one percent of Cumberland High School students, tenth graders, were able to be found proficient in mathematics. And I realize that within the context of Rhode Island, that's not that far outside the realm, but thirty-one percent, to me, is really concerning and a very low number. And to get that number higher will take a lot of effort on the part of many of you folks in this room who are outside this room. To me, this is really a crisis that I would like to hear a lot more about, how we're looking to solve this problem. To me, it's a problem not just for the sixty-nine percent who are not proficient, but also for the thirty-one percent whose learning may also be impacted by, by that number. So I think for me, what would be most helpful is to know more about what the decision-making process has been in regard to that last issue, how the mathematics problem is going to be addressed, and also what other issues or what other possibilities have been considered in regard to how to implement full-day kindergarten. Clearly, there are a lot of positives for that in terms of priorities for the district. I'm not sure that's a higher priority than increasing the math proficiency for our high school students immediately, but if this is being something we need to do, have other options been looked at in terms of not transitioning so many elementary school children into other schools? So those are my, my points, my questions, and thank you very much. Good time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee on the public hearing portion
I'm not six-seven. My name's Maggie Denton. I've been studying my report, and I spoke at one of the last meetings, and I'm more a numbers person, so I took a look at some of the numbers that were out there, which was very helpful to have all the information. And this is a follow-up on the point of the redistricting and the effects it's having on community school in particular. So what I put together here was just to show that with the proposed redistricting, community is the only school out of the five elementary schools that would be higher than the recommended signs and announced that recommendation. So if you just take the number of classrooms that they have, for example, Community would have five first-grade classrooms, and they should have about twenty-three kids in each class, so they should have a hundred and fifteen, hundred and fifteen first graders, and the current proposal, they have a hundred and twenty-two. So when you look at each of those schools, Community is about four percent too big. Ashton has some excess capacity, about twelve percent. Cumberland Hill still has about ten percent excess capacity. Garvin has about seven, and BF Norton has about five percent. So my point here is just that we're doing the redistricting, and we're leaving it at a point where one school has too many kids in it, and all the other schools still have some excess capacity. So I know David Gordon has mentioned that there'll be some tweaking perhaps when they do the final bus route system, and I hope that you consider bringing some of the kids back to Cumberland Hill because it doesn't seem like there is space available, and these other kids are going to community. It may not make a difference, but if there's ten families that don't have to be affected by this, I think like Paul had discussed earlier, that's ten families that don't have to go through the presidential stress, and also people are, they're ready. I mean, we've talked about this for a long time. We know people are moving, and my family will move, and my kids will be okay, but if you could save a few kids the stress of this, then I think we should at least consider that maybe there's some places along the main road where the buses would have to be shifted by a lot. And also, I think, fancy, you know, Community's a big school now, so why we can start to make it the biggest school, and if there's opportunities where you can have them to be at the other school. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rotherneau?
Good evening. I'm Joe Rotherneau, I'm at E. Four Press at Court. As I mentioned the last meeting, I do think that this proposal has, has moved too quickly. The first concrete proposal that we saw on this was in late January. There was a discussion at the committee in early December that there was no concrete proposals, and there was only one in late January. Before that, the last concrete proposal that, that the public could have a chance to comment on was in March of '04, years ago this month. So it, it is going, it is going very rapidly, and, you know, the gentleman mentioned, I was going to say to myself, talk about some research around the negative impact of redistricting on kids and how that might counter bail. The benefits of full-day K, which I want to argue here, sure those benefits have been well, well-considered, and I'm not necessarily opposed to full-day K, but the negative impact on kids in the other five grades, and we're trying to take, I think, a thirteen-grade picture of this in terms of the overall benefits to the, to the school system, sure there'd be, is a benefit to one of the grades, kindergarten, that benefit will carry through, I'm sure that would be the next thing you'd say, you'd be right, it would carry through with those kids to the other grades, and they're, you know, they'll be probably better prepared, but so will the negative impacts carried through from the redistrict kids through the rest of their career as they, as they move to the middle school and the, and the high school. So my recommendation, suggestion to the committee would be to consider, to take more time to consider this, to look at the research on the negative impact of redistricting and balance those against the full-day K benefits. With that, presuming that this is going to happen anyway, I would like to, I've understood from speaking to Dr. Thorne privately and also through some of your public comments, that there won't be any middle school redistricting. I'd like to hear more specifics about that, sort of a more, you know, since this is sort of perhaps the final meeting before a vote, a, a public comment, Dr. Thorne, on your part about that, has it memorialized on the video as well as this being admitted, has it been admitted, admitted, that, that you, you know, you're taking that position, so that the future, there's no misunderstanding around that, that particular point. Thank you.
Excellent. I should be happy to. Going back a few months, we first were modeling full-day K. I live in the committee at one of our first public interactions at the middle school, and I did look into it. I've told the committee over several meetings, a court has gained students approximately fifty-nine, sixty students started the year. I told them some time back, there is no plan whatsoever to redistrict the middle schools. With North Cumberland only around eighty more students than the court, and the court coming on strong, I see no reason whatsoever to do that. So I said that publicly at the time, but I can say it again with the camera, there's no plan to redistrict the middles. Maybe that's one. Does anyone else who would like to address the committee on the public hearing?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lisa Monier. I live at Norton Drive. I'm not here to do this beautiful day kindergarten. I definitely see the benefits of it. I'm a reading teacher in Morbin District. I work with kindergarteners who have difficulty with reading. Absolutely in favor of full-day kindergarten. However, I have a problem with taking the positive factor of full-day kindergarten and implementing the negative effect for children that have such a far distance to travel from their home to their elementary school. We moved into Cumberland less than two years ago. We bought a house that was a mile away from Cumberland Hill, and for my children to have to drive three miles downward to Ashton is more the issue than not that Ashton has nothing to do with. Ashton, it would be community as well, simply the distance that children would have to travel so far away just to attend an elementary school to simply have the benefits of full-day K. My bigger concern is with the speed at which the process is going, have they met any alternative, alternative to implementing full-day K in the current schools? Cumberland Hill students currently go to community for kindergarten. If there's an excess amount of space at BF Norton, where we're two hundred and somewhat children at this point, but it has a capacity of four hundred, could BF Norton be a kindergarten center? Is that something that's being proposed? Are there other alternatives being addressed as opposed to moving hundreds of children away from their homes for a simple full-day K? Thank you.
Thank you. And there anyone else who would like to address the committee?
My name is Jennifer Scott. I live on Volstaff Drive. I'm an educator in another town in Rhode Island, and I'm also a parent of two young children. Everyone knows that Cumberland is a phenomenal place to live. It's picturesque, close to the highways, and has a sense of community like no other. But what Cumberland is lacking right now is a superior educational system that existed here many years ago. This is what will make potential residents choose other towns over Cumberland. As a taxpayer and a homeowner, that's a concern. As a parent of two young children, it's a real concern. When the topic of the educational system in Cumberland comes up, my husband's comment has always been, "Things change, give at times." I took this comment with a grain of salt until this September. We hired a superintendent with a vision to bring Cumberland back to its superiority. In order for this vision to occur, the citizens of Cumberland need to realize that change is necessary. All greenery starts from the bottom up. Sixty percent of children in Rhode Island are currently short full-day kindergarten. Not in Cumberland, yet a neighboring town of Lincoln has all-day K and is looking into all-day pre-K for next year or the year after. Cumberland is slowly behind. Teachers in our town need students that are prepared to learn and have solid foundations that they can build upon. We're wasting the most important part of our children's educational career by keeping them stagnant. Isn't it better to spend our taxpayer money on getting it right the first time versus extra money on remediating children further down the line? I see one obstacle in the way of making all-day K a reality for Cumberland this September, the issue of redistricting. The parents who see students that were changed schools are devastated, and that is totally understandable. As an educator, I have, I work in the middle school. I have children that come in from various elementary schools, so many of them are in the same situation. They're not with friends of theirs, they're in a new school, they don't know any of their teachers. The parents need to look at the big picture and understand that children come and want that will benefit. Children are brilliant, they will make new friends. These children will be at a better school, they'll have better educational opportunities and better choice at quality colleges, and as we said, they're going to extra money on remediating children further down the line? I see one obstacle in the way of making all day K a reality for Cumberland this September, the issue of redistricting. The parents who see students that were changed schools are devastated, and that is totally understandable. As an educator, I have, I work in the middle school, I have children that come in from various elementary schools, so many of them are in the same situation, they're not with friends of theirs, they're in a new school, they don't know any of their teachers. The parents need to look at the big picture and understand that children come and wants that will benefit. Children are resilient, they will make new friends. These children will be able to go to other schools, they'll have better educational opportunities and better choice for quality colleges. And as we said, they're going to travel in groups anyways. We have put education on the back burner long enough, it's time to put Cumberland back on the map to the taxpayer, the homeowner, and the children of Cumberland. Please help superintendent Thorntons implement a vision of high-quality education for all students in Cumberland. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello, my name is Lucy Dominique, I live on Southbury Road. I'm currently a senior at URI, I study early test specifications, and I was so excited to hear that Cumberland was pursuing full day K because, you know, we learned that it's just, it's always hard to start and knowing, you know, relating to the whole child, and, you know, focusing on what they need to know, and I think especially at this time, because the Common Course Suite standards, which, you know, a lot of schools are working now, start in kindergarten, and I just feel like kindergarteners will have a better chance of reading all those standards, because they're there for the full day as opposed to two and a half hours, because part of the two and a half hours, you know, you're taking off your coat, you're getting set all the time, that takes time, you're going to your PE class or your music class, and so it's really not two and a half hours of instruction. So I think kindergarteners will definitely benefit from the full day of instruction, and I'm just, I'm so happy. And I'm a freshman, I went to four different elementary schools. And when I was in Rhode Island, summer sport is great, I left across the street from Cumberland Hills, and I was bused to garden. It wasn't a big problem for me, I mean, it's very daunting, it's scary, but I did it, and I mean, I turned out fine. I think the problem is the Common Course Suite standards, you know, every state is switching to this standard, and they have to do some pretty impressive things in kindergarten, I took some notes before I left. Kindergarteners will have to know how to count to 100 by month and ten. And I mean, it doesn't seem easy, but I'm student teaching in a first grade classroom right now, a ton of questions, it's so difficult, it is, especially if they didn't have that foundation in kindergarten. And you can really tell which students went to a full day K and a half day K. The students in my class, the full day K students, you know, they're reading chapter books in first grade, and the children who went to half day K are on grade level, below grade level, it's, I mean, it's a $10 child, but I see that, I guess, the children who went to full day K are, you know, so far beyond some of the other children, it's really amazing. Something else that I find is difficult for the first graders that I have is counting forward, beginning from a given number, so if I tell them, start at 13 and count forward, you know, they get a little confused. And that's something that Common Course Suite standards, that kindergarteners should be able to do if I depend on these. So I just, I think it's going to be so kind of special for them to have a full day program. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Langton, I live on Oakwood Road, and I'm sure I'm not going to get up my top foot. I'm, my neighborhood is impacted by this, but my child is not directly impacted by full day K or by the redistricting due to the middle school. But as a parent of multiple child, I am concerned about the money. I understand we need full day K in this town, but recently it was, we were looking at a cost of 385,000, tonight we heard that it's up over 500,000, and I just hope that if we go through the budget process, that full day K doesn't come as an impact to the rest of the students in this town. My son is having a warning to the spirit they want to come on middle school, but I can tell you, they don't have enough science books for the sixth grader to see the science book home. So if we're going to spend this money on full day K, can we make sure that we have the resources we need for the kids who are already in this? Thank you.
And anyone else? You will have an opportunity on the eighth on the public comment, which would be a generic opportunity, to speak anything at that time on the eighth. I'd like to share a last specific to speak on this, Monica? Well, it's not your last chance, I mean, I don't know what I'm trying to say, you can say it, you can speak specifically, I know it is last. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Allison Mcguffin, I live at Tuba Flush in the Bearville neighborhood, which Dr. Thornton just recently visited. As I, I follow Mr. Anderson's comments, he has been analyzing it a lot more eloquently than I would have been. When you're in these neighborhoods, embarrassed enough several times for redistricting, everyone says the kids will be fine, kids are resilient. As he mentioned, typically, it just gets a little frustrating that those comments almost always come from people that aren't up for redistricting. Excuse me, that, one thing that I was a little confused about after the Bearville meeting was that if the decision is made March 8th, we'll go ahead with these meet briefs that I've seen social, and I think that's our grade, I would love to be a part of that and help these to transition, what if the funding is pulled after that? Or what if we don't get the cut, we need to make that go forward. I don't think we can underestimate what it does to kids having to, this change looming in front of them. And if we rule it out and tell them that they're going to this school, I really, really want to be able to follow through with that. I can't imagine what would happen if we had to pull back after that happened, so I was a little concerned about that. The other thing was this, at the Bearville meeting, a woman who had a special needs child woke up, and it had taken her a whole year to get her son acclimated to community. But I also just want to say, don't underestimate the typical child and the stress that that will put on the family going through that change. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll speak to the, to the, your comments below, you know, for this to go forward in the funding, which we all know is, is a vital piece, and at this point in the process, there's always, there's uncertainty, because we don't control what the revenue numbers are going to be, that upside and downside. I would say that, as before, I would ask this committee to vote on the proposal on March 8th, that they would have to be a reasonable assurances that it wouldn't be pulled back. There's no way that, I know this is a difficult issue for many people, including other committees, but I certainly would not ask for a vote that I thought had any chance of not happening based on funding. So if on March 8th, I feel that it is uncertain, I would voice that at that time. There are some discussions going on, and certainly we are looking at that as a budget in its entirety, so it's, obviously that is something that is being discussed, and I don't think I'd move the district forward to go through this process, have a vote, and then not do it, and I'm against it, that doesn't look good for anybody. I think as far as the resources, Mrs. Langton spoke to me so many times in the last few years, we've just been, you know, cutting things here, and this is another difficult year, and there are going to be adjustments that are going to have to be made to move the district forward, and I guess as well on the math scores, which are highly problematic, and I share your concern as well, and in this budget, we're going, maybe Dr. Thornton won't speak to that, but we're certainly attending to that need as well, and for me, you know, both of those items are items that I cannot support taking home. So I'm doing everything I can to present budgets that make sense to those who have to pay for, and the children who are going to get educated in the district, so there's still a week to go. So it's as honest as I can be, I can't sit here tonight and say that I'm completely comfortable that it could happen, you know, that will present one that makes sense, and it can be fun, so. I am extremely hopeful, and I can't personally envision one, maybe because I let myself envision one in which it can't happen. So right now, I'm confident, but that doesn't mean it's a certainty, so. There's certainly not looking to reduce any opportunities for any child at any school at any level in the district, so. We're gonna highlight that we recognize that the challenge.
Sure, that's probably just a reaction to a few things. Folks, this speaker on the math, the math is absolutely on our radar from K to 12. In terms of the high schools, we come back next week, we'll hear Chris Scott, our math department chief, report out on the pilot we've been doing. We have essentially taken the 10th graders there in the most needed geometry, put through a pilot program with their name data, that's a school leader of the day, right from math support. He's going to show you the graph of progress of these students from last month where they are right now, this gets to the kneecap next fall. In that budget, I'm giving the committee next week, a piece of budget calls for after school programming for students in math at the middle and high school level. The budget also calls for five math interventionists at the K levels, help kids who really struggle with math, we're paying for those folks with Title I money, and also some, possibly some I D E A money, operating budget money. Essentially, we're attacking the math problem from all angles. At the middle school level, we know, I told the committee, our math series is not where we want it to be, the book we use is not a good one. We're down, I talked to the math folks today, we're down to two different selections, the leading contender is a 2013 publication I'm looking at with the team next week, that's built into the budget for next year. So we're absolutely attacking math from front to back. I'd also say, so much is the science, we recently signed a agreement with JSTH, we've heard about a science initiative where we have kids taking science programs right now, we don't have the fidelity to actually measure if we're doing it. By that, I mean, the district now that has an anti-science program, which trains the people that come into the buildings to make it happen. The schools where I have been, I have initiated these programs, both schools now have some of the highest science scores in Rhode Island. You can check Ashley School in Charro, highest fourth grade scores in Rhode Island, they started out with Owl Balance back in 2006, now they have a good anti-science program. Davisville Middle School, second to Garen, and three years ago, they had three or four textbooks, they kind of hodgepodge together. That program's now in, Cumberland's, we're doing it, it's K to eight, so we're starting that. We also funded some more fifth base programming inside, just a quick factoid, at the middle school level, you only have four kids in science, we can only go two. So we're missing out on, I think, our other stage, we have to stop the events, so we're adding that, so we're actually going, looking at. As far as folks who are nervous about us funding full day K, I think of something else, you know, we are funding the fund, there's going to be a ticket at. Having said that, I'll tell you this, if Governor Cheney's funding comes in where it should be, and if it tells us more support, I'll still have to give the committee some possible reductions, because that's the nature of what's in town right now, we're in, going south, looking for old center. However, to me, full day K and math interventionists are something I want to hold in the center, so you may hear some reductions from these balance of budget, but that's what we have to do for the job to us. Really, it's a question, for me and myself, about priorities, they're all tough choices. What are your rent, have you seen these things coming out? My thinking is for next week, I'd say I'd be also give the budget to the school committee for their consideration for the next month after that, I'll give the cover sheets of my thinking for the balance of budget.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Is there anyone else before I close the public area? Is there something that would call? Just wanted to mention, we're closing the public area at 8:10 PM. So at this point, if there's any member of the committee that has a question or comment, you can, just again.
I just have a few random thoughts, and then I have a question for Dr. Thornton. I'll start with this question, looking at, you know, if we implement a full day kindergarten program, and I know that, I mean, I can certainly see the benefits of when you implement that program, and, you know, when they enter, say, first grade, second grade, the kids are prior further ahead. But the studies show that as they pass through the different grades, they get to a certain grade, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, where they're a little off, where the kids that have had full day K are really scoring where the kids that didn't have full day K. I can understand the benefits early on, but have them later on.
Sure, a few thoughts there, a couple, I don't know, really, I just did my third grade levels out, a study in 2010 or 11 Harvard said they actually make more money when they get old, when they grow up, that's what you look at. I think maybe a couple pieces in my mind, first, we are looking at, you know, kids are ready to learn, kids are reading earlier, also, a lot of kids only have, we prefer the special education where they're not at levels, looking actually at a more efficient model, like a Midas program, pay now, you know, or pay later. I think this is really getting in front of our educational programming, and really getting what they need early on. So the answer is, very rare, some research, some other research said, actually, to welcome our life, Google Harvard, I think 2011, full day K, you can see that, but the research on all the topics, really, I think, I'm running gamut. Essentially, I think you'll find that they say, in most good studies, full day K is at one time or half, therefore they do better, that's kind of the bottom line, I think.
And just adding on there, when I look at the list of communities here that are not offering full day K currently, or in, say, 2010, 2011, some of those communities are some of the highest scoring communities in the state. So is full day K more socio-economic, or is it, you know, why are some of the communities that aren't offering full day K still scoring at the top of the scores?
Sure, I think a full day K is, I would say, one piece of the puzzle. If you look at the district, they're scoring well, first question I would say is, look at their pre-pupil expenditure, bear this credit, we're the lowest funded district in Rhode Island for pre-pupil. So in terms of other programming, other offerings, technology, you know, interventionists, we're at the bottom. So I think we're trying to change that now, and really be aggressive, so that's a part of it. Full day K, I think, is one thing, if you went to a school district to look at what's a good district, that's one indicator, I would have to check the box and say, do they have full day K? And that's one indicator of a good program, I think, I think it's hanging in with a good program at the high school level, good elective offerings, interventionist, that kind of thing.
I just have a couple more random thoughts, because, you know, listening to what people had here, had to say here tonight, certainly, you know, I took some notes on this, when I hear people, every time that we've talked about redistricting, whether it was, you know, a few years back, or back in the 90s, you always hear the comments, we're going too fast. I have heard that, that every, every time redistricting has been spoken about over the years. There's always some people who feel that things are going too fast, I kind of relate that to people, it's like, let's slow it down, so my kid's unaffected, and then do it, you know, on somebody else's watch. So it doesn't matter whether we make a decision in a month, two months, three months, six months, I always hear the comments that we're going too fast. I mean, one of the things that I, that I see in the process that we have done, is I think that Dr. Thornton and his team has really thought this plan out, it's probably the best plan that I've seen, and I've been involved in some other plans over the years. This may have happened fairly quick, but with today's technology they have, and how we're able to analyze the schools, I think the plan is very well laid out. As far as, one of the parents tonight spoke about, you know, balancing community school even further, I totally agree with that. I think if we're going to redistrict, I think we need to balance the schools as best we can. I mean, we've always seemed to kind of jam things into community because they've had the space. Community is also, you know, historically been our highest ranking school in town, so I understand why people want to have their children at a community school. But at the same time, if we have space in other schools where we can balance the system even more, I think- more, I think that we need to look at that. So Dr. Thornton, if we can, you know, if we have to tweak this a little further to kind of balance things off a little more, I'm certainly open to listening to that.
One more. Okay. Dr. Thornton?
Actually, that's all of that. We have looked at that, these words right now. If you look at the bus run level, because of bus run, those are the best numbers. If you want to get more detail, we're down to the street level and the question would be either A, we're not offering transportation to those folks and we're making more of a balance, or B, we're adding more buses. So the current thinking was, at the bus run level, that's the best we can get. If you want to go to a street level, we can get more balance in either A, not offer busing for those, or B, offer single bus. Either one we can look at.
Thank you. That's all there is after tonight. Thank you. Cecilia?
I'm really just offering some thoughts because I don't have questions and haven't had many questions the past few meetings because I feel like the information has been so available and I've been able to have conversations both publicly and privately with the people that have been in charge of putting it all together. But I don't also want to feel that I, I don't want anyone to think that by sitting up here quietly, I don't have lots of things in my mind. I certainly reject the notion that this is going too fast because I don't think that the town has redistricted in something like eighteen years, which is sort of unheard of in a school district. And because of that, we now are in a big, we have a big problem. And I sort of see my role as, I guess, like a dual role. Because the people who vote for school board members, they are, they don't all have kids in the schools, but they're all taxpayers. And seventy cents of every dollar they're paying property taxes goes to fund the schools. So I can't defend running schools that are half-empty and running other schools that are half-full to the people that are paying taxes in the town. It doesn't make sense and I argue that it's irresponsible. I'm also speaking as somebody who attended and taught in a school, they just built a hundred and fifteen million dollar high school and it was a place where if you needed anything, you asked for it and you got it. And I currently work with a team of students in a school, a high school, that has no gymnasium, no field. When it rains, it sometimes rains on your head. So I sort of live in both worlds and I understand all of the stress and the pain and all that goes with not having the things that you need. We don't have a single student where I work that can take a textbook home, ever. That being said, I grant for this office because I think that what was lacking in Cumberland was a sense of urgency. And for too long, they've somehow talked themselves out of doing things because they're different and they are hard and they cost money. We didn't pay our superintendent the way we should have, now we do. We didn't pay our assistant superintendent the way we should have, hopefully now we will. And we didn't, we didn't try and take on the labor. And to me, it would be letting down this community in so many ways not to redistrict the schools and not to do whatever we could to offer children full day kindergarten. So I guess for the first time, I'm publicly stating where I stand on it. I would support redistricting if the full day K did not pass because I still can't justify running a building at half-capacity and having other students being taught in the hallway. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia. Anything else?
Yes, I do have some questions. Basically, there is a lot of budget. I mean, to start, we did the SAG year, we passed budgets, the SAG just done all. And they are just a proposal. It doesn't mean we're going to get the funding that we need or the funding that we want. And just to get something clear, even the fact that we don't get the funding, a redistricting plan won't take place. At this point, if you were to vote negatively next week, I would then ask you the question, should I go back and now look at redraw the lines for stocks? I'd ask the question to see how you want to proceed on that. Well, just to reiterate what Mrs. Anderson just said, we do have schools that have capacity. And we have not actually acted fast on this project. I've sat here and I've sat on three plus ten years and I've set some three different plans. And every time we play, we pay tens of thousands of dollars for these plans, they sit on the shelf. And every plan that comes back says the same thing. Our schools up north are overbrowning and our schools in the southern part of our town are not fully capacity. And we've sat here, I've sat here three times, the third time I've sat here during a redistricting plan, and it always comes down to the fact that we need to move our students to the southern part of town. This is a good thing. We overbuilt town Cumberland communities, especially in the northern part, nobody in the intact is now, and we're looking at doing things that we need to do. But just to go back, if it comes down to, and I said this to Mr. Martin the other night, if it comes down between the plan for math, for mathematics, or all day kindergarten, I can't support all day kindergarten when it comes down to our mathematics program that we know we need to work on, because my grades have been low for the last, not just last year, but the last four or five years, that we've, we've had kneecaps in the eleven grade. So we do have to get our priorities. We have not seen the budget as a committee member and actually as the chair of the finance committee, I've not seen the budget. And the question is, we get to see it before next Thursday, so at least we can have some information going in. But just to reiterate, we have not acted fast. This has taken about ten years, and we're saying eighteen years since the last time. I'm thinking about ten years from where we had that. And I would like to talk, thank Dr. Thornton and his team for putting this proposal together so quickly. Again, it is probably one of the better ones I've seen since I've been here.
Cecilia? I will add the, as far as the full day, I thought I did, but as far as the proposals that Dr. Thornton has said, you know, are center pieces of the budget, and I know for me, I'm certainly publicly on the record saying that I wouldn't support a budget that would take the math intervention force out of it. No, what I really, unless I had to, support one that didn't include the mild that is in front of us for a vote on the E. And I wouldn't ask you to do so, it's my job as the chair, certainly not to put you in a position where, you know, it's one of my favorite lines, for the best you can do is fail. I'm not going to do it. So, and you'll, we may have the budget presented by the E, but there's certainly discussions that are going on right now that lead to a belief that it's possible. And if it's not, or, you know, it's a lottery shot, we're not going to take it. It has to be something that is possible. So we wouldn't put you in that spot, not going to, it's not going to be a choice between full day kindergarten and a math interventionist. It's going to be, it's going to have either both of them or it's going to have none of them. And certainly, it's my belief that it's going to have both of them. And certainly I'll work on that. You understand, as a long-term member of this committee, that this is fluid process, but we are having discussions with the mayor and the conceptual discussions that include these items and they're going along optimistically at this point. And if there's a point where it just does not make sense, we will not vote on this, or I would ask for us to not vote on the E. Certainly have no interest, once again, in putting this to a vote and then having any shot at taking the E taken back. That's not going to happen. Okay, is there anyone else? I have a motion to...